Come to order, Town of Florence, regular. Everybody there? Town of Florence, Planning and zoning, regular planning and zoning meeting. I'll spit it out sooner or later. Will you please take the roll call, sir?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Prowe.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Schmidt. Commissioner Schmidt, your sound's not on. Although I see you there, so I'll mark you present. Vice Chair Frost.
Present.
Chairman Bronzo.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. A pledge of allegiance. I'll say it. Everybody can follow along. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving right along. Discussion approval, disapproval of a minister regularly meeting conducted on November 5th, 2020. I'll open up to the council for comments, corrections.
I have no, I have no comments.
All right then, if there's no comments, may I have a motion?
I will move.
All right, motion by Commissioner Pro. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I believe the second was by Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt has not turned his sound on yet.
Oh. Can we give him hand signals?
There he is.
Somebody call him by phone.
That worked.
Okay.
Yep.
So. So. Motion by Commissioner Pro, second by Commissioner Simmons. All those in favor? Aye.
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 No opposed. We'll move on. We are really batting a thousand on my side. New business. This is a presentation, a public hearing, approval or disapproval of a conditional use permit application, PZ 2026, by the Higher Dimension Christian Center for a church located at 424 and 440 East Butte Avenue in Florence. Do we have a presentation?
I have a short introduction to the topic.
That'd be great.
Chairman, members of the commission, the applicant Higher Dimension Christian Center, Inc., has several representatives here today with us. We have Pastor Rodney, Pastor Brenda, and another member as well. The Higher Dimension Christian Church has located these two parcels and they wish to have a worship area or assembly with a donation center in this building. These two activities will be operating at different times. The zoning for this property is in one of our areas that we come to fondly call the Fun Four area. It has four different zonings: Neighborhood Office, Single Family Residential, Multi-Family Residential, and Manufactured Home subdivision. They're requesting to use the zoning uses under Neighborhood Office. They currently have onsite parking on this lot. There is no signage at the moment, other than leftover banners from the previous use. And they are concurrently going through an infill process through the infill district for relief from parking requirements, since they only currently have 16 parking spaces at this time, with two of them being ADA spots. We do not see any negative impact on the surrounding areas. And the town has helped them with their public participation. We have put out ads in the paper. We've done a 300-foot site notice by mail. And earlier today, a public neighborhood meeting was conducted and no members of the public showed up. There was no comments from the public in that format. There may be some here if there are any willing to talk at any time. Recommendation at this time is to allow a favorable recommendation go towards the council with the posted requirements or conditions in the staff report. That concludes my present.
Okay, I'll open it up to the commission. Questions, comments, gentlemen?
Question, Chairman?
Please.
Is the I can see on the, according to the map here, it shows on the southeast corner of Central in Butte. Is that a vacant lot?
Yes, that lot just to the east of them is vacant. Southeast, if we're talking on the other side of Butte.
No, I'm, no, I'm sorry. I didn't mean, no. I meant the northeast corner. I'm sorry. You're right. I'm extra. Yeah, directly east of Center on Butte. That's a vacant lot?
Yes.
Yes.
And what about on what about on the west side? It doesn't show here. Is, is that also, isn't that a lot that's used by county employees to park?
That is a lot that is owned by the county for parking.
Now, well, those two lots, I mean, there's only 16 parking spots. Are those two lots going to be available for for use for the, for the church parishioners?
I need to interrupt briefly. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Schmidt, that is actually the next item on the agenda. We'll be discussing the parking issue specifically. You know, because of the nature of the parking and lack thereof on the site, they have applied for the Core Infill District incentive. And so that was, that's actually what the next item is on the agenda, is talk specifically about parking.
Okay, I just kind of hard to put it together with this, with this conditional use permit, if you don't know about the parking, so.
Right, I'm just pointing, pointing that out that we'll be talking about it. But yes, the county complex is immediately to the west and of course, in the which is public parking.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments from the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
A question of Monticella. The, the property directly to the north of this is actually a single-family residence, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's the only that's the only side that's actually abutted by an existing residence then?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I'm looking at the map correctly.
And that property owner has been notified also.
Great. Any other comments or questions? All right, I, I have a question. When I read the packet, one of the words that jumped out to me was donations. What form are these donations going to take? If a representative from the, the church would speak, please?
Yes, basically, it's, it's the donations that we're giving out to the community that we have acquired already.
So help me understand it. Are they couches, TVs?
Again, good, very good. What it is, is more so clothing, clothing goods that will be given out to the community.
Do you see that morphing into larger items?
No, sir.
Okay. One of the things I'm concerned about, considering the size of the buildings and the small parking area you have, larger things have a tendency to show up. And I don't want to find us in a position where you have to use the parking lot as an overflow.
Correct.
Do you anticipate that?
No, sir. That's why we, we are basically, it's only going to be clothing.
Okay. So you're going to compete with bucks for style, are you?
Well, really, it's, it's not even that. It's because it's, we're going to really be giving them away, basically, so it's.
Oh, you gotta be, okay. All right, that was, that was my only concern. If in the future, and I'm going to make this a condition, if in the future you do find yourself in a position where serving the community, you find you need to take larger items where storage needs to take place outside. I'm going to make it a commission as a part of the motion that items of that nature stored outside must be under roof and shielded from the public. Do you have any problem with that?
No, sir.
Okay, do I have any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Just, just wanted to clarify your question, Mr. Chairman, and that is that they, the pastor explained that they will be giving away clothing. Will they also be taking donations of clothing here at the center?
One of the things, that would probably be done more with our own parishioners versus someone just coming off of, off of the street to donate to us. This way, we can kind of more so control it. But that's, that's the way I'm, I'm looking at it for, you know, future, so to to also add into what the gentleman said earlier, that because I, I really don't want that. I really don't want anything on the outside.
Maybe it might be good to point out, Pastor Rodney, that this is a branch, if you will, of the primary church that's, that is located in Mesa.
Yes. Yeah, we have a, there's a, there's a associate, you know, associate ministry that we're also affiliated with that's in Living Word Bible Church, which is in Mesa. But over between Valvista and Brown.
All right, I want you to understand, Pastor, that sometimes the person in charge of the buildings changes hands and the continuity gets lost and things start to change. Right. So this is why I'm going to impose that condition. Do we have any other questions or comments? I'll take that silence as no. Then I will move.
We need to open and close a public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. And I, I do think we have people in the background, 12 participants. So I'll open it up to the public at this time. Thank you, Mr. Harmon, for keeping me on track.
We do have one person who is, what, you know, listening in or watching in right now. I don't know if they wish to speak. They're on mute.
Yeah, I just allowed it. So if they, they wish to, they can speak now, so.
Okay.
All right, then I'm going to take that silence as they don't wish to speak. What do we got? Four, eight, nine? We're, we're 10. There's two people out there somewhere.
Well, one of them is our IT person.
Oh. All right, with that said, I'll close it to the public. And I'll move that we approve PZ 2026 with the condition that the donation area, if it should expand outside of the building, will require a roof and be shielded from public view. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that. I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
So, second by Commissioner Pro. All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, and your motion includes the conditions that are there by staff as well, correctly, correct?
I did not see that condition in the staff's recommendations.
They, they just said they have seven recommendations. I just wanted to make sure that your motion included that.
Ah, thank you. Including conditions imposed by the planning staff. And so we're, boy, I'm just screwing this up good tonight.
Oh, that was implied, so.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Let's see how well I do with the second part. All right, this is a presentation, approval, disapproval of a core infill incentive district application. And this is PZID 20-01 by the Higher Dimension Christian Center for a reduction of required parking on a developed property located at 424 and 448 East Butte Avenue in Florence. Ms. Benitez, do you have any comments?
I do not have any comments, but I believe Mr. Harmer is presenting this item tonight.
Oh, tag team, is it?
We're tag teaming tonight. This is a unique property, well, not totally unique, obviously, but it sits within the core district infill incentive area of the town. That program acknowledges that there are flaws in the way that existing and vacant property laid out throughout the town. You've heard a couple of these before. A couple of years ago, the Lyons property, where part of the house was sitting in public right of way. Last year, where there was a home actually straddling a property line with the adjacent neighbor. These are the opportunities where we can grant minor exceptions to our codes, our development codes, without going through major process. In this particular case, we have an existing site with existing building and existing parking that already sits on the site, 16 spaces, two of which are ADA compliant. If this were to be a commercial property, it would be underparked. If it would be any one of a number of things, there's not enough parking on site. It was approved many years ago and built so in such a manner, but apparently was never been in compliance with parking requirements, from what we can tell from the history. The basic requirements based on the allocated square footage inside the building would be about 21 spaces for the the worship center. And I, my apologies, I believe there's 19 onsite and two are ADA. And then there's a few offices, which would require five, and then the donation center would require 13. However, as is noted in the applicant's letter requesting consideration from the Core Infill Incentive District, the operation of the donation center will not coincide at the same hours as the worship center. And the same thing, you know, basically with the offices too. They're not all going to be used at the same time. Worship center primarily on Sunday. Center would be something that would be more during a retail business hour period. On-street parking is allowed on park. It's allowed on center. And of course, as was noted earlier, there's available parking on the county complex immediately to the west. So based on the criteria that's established in the Core Infill Incentive District, you know, basically, that plan was adopted by state statute to allow for this type of remedy that the requirements or the property itself qualifies for consideration by the incentive district. The overall impact, we don't believe is going to adversely impact the entire neighborhood. And that it would also, the crest puts a user into the vacant buildings and starts enhancing the, some of the revitalization efforts and use of the vacant structures in and around the downtown core. This particular process does not require public participation, per se, meaning they're not a separate meeting. Just the hearing that you have tonight. And then based on the findings, staff would recommend that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval of the Core Infill Incentive request by the Higher Dimension Christian Center, that we move that on to the council. At this point, we have no specific conditions that we would recommend. If you wish to add some, at your discretion, that would be up to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. I'll open it up to the commission. Questions, comments? I, I have one question, and it probably would have been more appropriate in the first presentation. Do you see at any time in your future creating a food bank? Pastor?
Right now, we, we don't, it's not part of our short-term, you know, goals and everything of that nature. That's something that we would have to look into for future usage and, but not as of now, no.
The reason that comes to mind, there's a Baptist church on the corner of Willow and Butte, which also has a food bank. And the cars and the people line up around the block. You're, you're close to a main thoroughfare being on Butte, particularly being on the east side of Main Street. That's a fairly busy traffic area. So if you were to open a food bank, there would have to be more thinking about that.
Correct. Right.
I think, Mr. Chairman, also, and for the Christian Center's information also, I understand that Butte Avenue in this location is a state highway. And therefore, using that for parking, stacking of vehicles, for anything of that nature would not be appropriate, then the, the state would intercede.
Okay. With that said, then you have to help me here, Mr. Harmon. Is this, is this something where if a food bank was desired later on, that they would need to come back to community development?
Actually, they might have to come back to the commission, because the conditional use permit is for the church and the donation center only.
Okay, so there's really no reason for me to impose the condition?
If, if they were to change the internal use of it, that would trigger a new hearing.
Okay. Well then, with that said, are there any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just a, just a question concerning, you mentioned long lines for the food bank there. I believe you said the Baptist church. Is that, is that a daily thing? Is there, I, I'm not aware.
It's not daily, but it is at least weekly. They have some large trucks parked on the, on the property in order to bring the food in. And it serves quite a few people. When they line up, it's pretty tough to get through the street. And so to put that kind of a activity on Butte would not be good. So, okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Well then, I will pass on screwing this up and ask somebody to make a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve the I didn't write down the PZ, what, what number is it? Yes, I make the motion that we approve that with the conditions, of course.
Do I have do I have a second?
I will second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Pro, second by Commissioner Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Pastor, I'd like to comment. Welcome to the community. Anytime we can bring people together with a common cause, it's good for the town.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is the part where if we were in a building, I would hear the door opening and closing as people usher out.
They're welcome to stick around for the next
Yes, you're welcome.
minutes, about how long the meeting will be, I think.
Yes. You can, you can watch the paint dry. Or just watch me screw up as we move along. Okay. Moving right along, for information only, general plan update. Who gets to do that one?
Mr. Chairman, just a little bit of a more date specific. We will be having the questionnaire posted, or a link to the questionnaire posted on the town's website on or about December 1st. That's kind of keeping us right on schedule. And then, so the, the general plan update is moving along. If you like, I'll go right into B, which is the redevelopment plan update. That draft has been posted. I've received your comments, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate that. Anybody else who has comments, if you check the links, we have it on the community development website as a link to it. There have been a few modifications since the, the one we actually sent to you directly, where we got rid of some white space and cleaned up some of the, the grammatical and punctuation errors and things of that nature. Also, at this time, we have tentatively scheduled a study, a session with the planning commission on the redevelopment plan for your January 7th meeting.
Okay.
So that one is, we're moving that one forward. We're going to, we'd like to get that wrapped up in the first quarter of 2021. It'll be going to HDAC the week before, the last Wednesday of December, for the same purpose, public meeting and public input for the redevelopment plan.
Okay, I, I have a question for you on what I read on the screen. You know, I couldn't figure out how to print out that presentation.
There's, there's a, if you notice on the main screen, once you go into the link, it'll say PDF version.
Okay.
Click on.
I missed it. Well, my question is, there was a phrase that jumped off the page at me. And I didn't understand what it meant. Workman's housing? What is workman's housing?
It's a general term for, you know, occupational work housing for local employees. For example, you know, we have a lot of guards at the correctional facilities and a large percentage of them commute. So basically, it's workforce housing, where, where the local, the people who work in the community are able to actually find reasonable housing within the community, so they're not commuting as far.
And did I, did I get it right that Territory Square is the, been earmarked for that housing?
No, well, not the whole thing, no. There is currently a, and I miss, I can only give you a little bit without, you know, violating the agenda clauses here. But there is a proposal that the council is considering for a, about a 10-acre, 12-acre portion of that for a net zero energy housing development in there. It would be rental, but it's not what you would consider low-end rental. Net zero, meaning energy efficiency. That, you know, that they are very well-known company, Modus Development out of Scottsdale. They, it's an MODUS development. They have built projects similar to this around the valley. They have, I, I think they have one going in Casa Grande, but they've done some in Phoenix. I think they have one in Scottsdale. And they are sophisticated, pretty sophisticated builders. But Territory Square as a whole still has a lot of office and retail and other uses earmarked for it.
Yeah, well, I think I'm the only one left in government who was around when we planned Territory Square.
Yeah.
And let me just put it this way, anything that looks like Section 8 is not going to fly.
And, you know, that, that subject has been broached and that is not what this is.
Okay, I'll wait until the presentation on the 7th.
Yeah, they did a, well, as far as that particular developer, they've done a presentation to council and they gave authorization to the town manager to begin to, you know, negotiating a development agreement. So that's going to have public airing before anything's approved out there.
Okay, I it's near and dear to some people on this side of the Gila.
Yes.
And we don't want to see what we intended get eroded.
Right.
We'll just have to wait and see.
Okay. I think we probably ought to get back on the topic of the agenda, however.
Yeah.
Probably violated open meeting law enough.
Yeah, it looks like our, our participants stuck around to watch the paint dry.
Yeah.
Okay, future agenda items.
December 3rd would be your next meeting date. I am working diligently. I am working diligently to get you a bullet point draft of a home occupation code. So at this point, that will be the sole topic of conversation that night. Uh, it won't be in in codification form, it'll be in English instead. Uh, you've laid down, uh, new criteria for home occupations for you to look over, discuss. And then if we reach a consensus, then we can start putting it forward in, um, codification form.
Great.
Then the next meeting after that will be design review for Big O Tire. Um, that's, these are tentative right now, but, uh, design review for Big O Tire, which is located, uh, just north of the McDonald's. Um, out on Hunt Highway. And also a preliminary plat for, um, Freedom Farms. Freedom Farms is an old PUD that is just south of Magma Ranch. Um, just what you've been on the south side of Judd Road. Uh, it was approved as a PUD many, many years ago, and then Les Lay Dormant, it's coming back. Approximately a third of that PUD is, uh, been submitted as a preliminary plat, and once we get. A clearance from engineering, we will agendize that. We're hoping for the seventeenth. Uh, and that has. I can't remember the exact number, but multiple hundreds of lots. Um, and then we get into, uh, the agenda after that, of course, then would be January seventh for the redevelopment plan.
Great. And you leave on January eighth?
Uh, yeah. I have been informed, and, and, you know, I've been informed by management, although nothing's in writing yet, that they wish to. Uh, keep me as a consultant. To work on the redevelopment plan, the general plan, and then any incidental day-to-day stuff, just to help, you know. In the future, I'll make myself available. Uh, the advertisement for my replacement. Uh, they're actually advertising for a senior planner instead of a planning manager, uh, just because that's the market right now. And hopefully, that person would be coming on born, on board on or about that time. So I would be also available then, uh, to help with that transition and training.
Marcel, I want you to understand that my comments have nothing to do with you, but what I am concerned about. Deeply concerned about because I see the impact from it. With losing you, this will be the third turnover in planning in as many years. We have lost the continuity. And I see it in Territory Square, I see it in many other things. We we've got to find out what's at the root of this and and change it. Um, we're not doing the community any favor. I wish you, Mr. Harmon, all the luck in the world. You've put the the years in, but. It's getting hard because the next person that comes in is gonna have their own ideas. And, you know, as long as we're talking about this. Um, this is why the redevelopment plan is so near and dear to my heart. Um, you leave and the new person reads it. Are they gonna interpret it as it was meant to be interpreted? The discontinuity starts getting lost, so I'm very concerned about it. And nothing we can do about it at this point, but I hope the next person that comes in, um. Will be treated in such a way that they stay.
Well, and of course, you're all aware, I mean, uh, under normal circumstances, and if I was twenty years younger, I wouldn't be going anywhere.
Unfortunately, you're not.
Being here, I enjoy the town, I enjoy working with the folks that I've met here. And I know where you sit in the scheme of the world right now. I mean, I I've been telling people since I got here. Florence is sitting where Buckeye was about twenty years ago. You're on the cusp. Of really growing and really expanding.
I hope so.
Yeah, it's an exciting time in a community, it really is.
I hope, we will see. You will be missed. Okay, moving along. Um, call it a public. Uh, call it public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning Zoning Commission. And what all of this gobbledygook really means is that. If the committee, unless it's on the agenda, the commission cannot respond. Do we have any call to the public? I'll take that as a no. I'll close the call to the public, call to the commission, current events only. Gentlemen, do you have anything to add? All quiet on the western front.
We need to wish, um, Commissioner Smith, good luck. He will be missing the December third meeting, I understand. He'd be going, going after the rustic elk.
That's the plan. Oh.
After December third, you'll be gone. I I wonder how many people are missing in this community for Thanksgiving while they chasing elk?
Well, unfortunately, my wife's making me come back for Thanksgiving, but, but it's.
All right, it's good to see you.
The hunt doesn't actually start till the day after, so I'm not really missing anything, just a little scouting.
Okay. All right, then, with that.
Just, uh, just one final. Um, Mr. If I may, just one final comment, uh, with regard to Larry, and we're, of course, leaving that. That is gonna be a big void, but fortunately, we have Maricela to help with the continuity, so I think that's a good thing, anyway.
We will see. I hope so. I hope you are right. Okay, may I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Frost. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Good night, gentlemen.